Supervisor Menoit, unless there are any other speakers, any other members. All right, that concludes our audience speakers. We now, I'm now going to turn it over to our counsel. Karen Wasbysak.
In the night of the rec, uh, test today, there are a few things I'd like to say for the record. Thank you, sir. This is a request to initiate ordinance amendments and to direct staff to prepare such amendments. The reason why we have this initiation process is to avoid the time and expense of preparing ordinances that have no potential for adoption. Fast-tracking allows the board to assume the role of the planning agency for fast-track projects. The fast-track policy does not require projects with EIRs to be heard within ninety days after the date of their submission. It requires the board to hear the application as soon as feasible. Fast-track processing for projects doesn't mean individuals are not afforded due process and specifically the right to be heard. Any action taken today does not fast-track the newly submitted Liberty Quarry project.
Okay, thank you, Karen. All right. Supervisor Buster.
A couple of questions about, uh, alternate timing here. There was, there were kind of three possibilities here if Granite wanted to come back with a revised, revised proposal. Uh, the first one's been eliminated, but maybe you can give us an idea, had the, had their EIR not been certified, then, and they came back with a modified proposal? Approximately, when would be the earliest point where this board, my, or future board, might be considering it? That's, 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 that was possibility one here for the project. They could've come back, they could've had their EIR, had to do a whole new EIR. How long would that, that take before it got back to the board?
With a whole new, with a whole new EIR, it could take upwards of a year plus to get back to the board, with a whole new EIR.
All right, and in that original process, did Granite have an option to include a fallback position, that is something like the modified proposal that they're talking, bringing forward now? Did they have that option to have this, this bigger project that they went with, but also have a fallback alternative analyzed in that original submittal?
There, there were alternatives that were analyzed in the original submittal. I have not taken a look at their current application they have on file at this point. It was just submitted last week, as you know. Um, I'm not sure to what extent planning has had an opportunity to really take a look at it either. I doubt much time that has been available for that.
But with, again, with, if they, if they, if they have to do, would have had to have done a new, whole new EIR, when, about how many, how many months, how many years out would, would this board be looking at, say, this, this revised proposal?
A whole new EIR, again, would it be, would be at least a year. And, and I want to emphasize too, I mean, I believe they submitted their application in two thousand and five originally. So obviously, it took many, many years to get that project to the board.
Okay.
And, and the EIR was done, or it was-
And then again, approximately, uh, without fast-track, but with this, the situation as it is right now, before we take any action today, with their, their being able to use their, uh, their original EIR, when could this modified proposal be considered by this board?
With using the certified EIR?
Right, right.
Okay. Thrown them at me now.
Right.
With the certified EIR, correct?
Yes.
We still have to look at the application that's been submitted and what further environmental documentation or studies will be necessary to, for that project to move forward, and we haven't done that yet.
Well, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is, what amount of time does fast-track cut from the process, from that process? How long would that process take at the earliest?
Well, previously, there were six planning commission carions before the board.
So surely, the planning commission-
Correct.
The extra time the planning commission would take-
Correct.
That the fast-track eliminates, is that right?
Yes.
And about how much time could that, at a minimum, if, if the, if the planning commission, you know, truncated its review and whatnot, when, when would the, when would the project be back before the board? With the planning commission, with the original, with the current process in place, where it does not overstep or bypass the planning commission?
What are you talking, sorry, supervisor, you're talking about the fast, if, if, if we agreed to fast-track today, whether it would be to be back before us, the project, the Granite Quarry project?
Yeah, I'm trying to get, get at what, what, what these various alternatives-
She's a very smart lawyer.
What effect they have on how long Granite and, and the, and the, and the opposition have to wait before, before they get a final decision on this modified project out of its board. How long is it without the fast-track? How long, how, how much longer, I mean, how much shorter is it with the fast-track?
I think it's hard for me to comment on that because I haven't seen what they've submitted, so I, I hate to give you a date certain. However, however, I mean, certainly, certainly, if, if this project were not fast-tracked, then, then, and if we could, if we could, um, set forth some procedures at Planning Commission, um, that would allow us to be expedited through Planning Commission in an efficient manner, we could certainly get it to the board within the next several months, I would think, assuming there's no further environmental documentation necessary.
All right, so fast-track-
I hate to draw qualifications on that, but-
Fast-track knocks how many months off that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Look, I mean, we're, we're, we're all here to consider fast-track, what is it doing? And the main, the main reason we're being told is it gets, gets the project going, gets jobs going faster. How much faster?
It depends on a case-by-case basis.
All right, well, let me go back here. And that's, we had some of the proponents, a couple of, I think Mr. Smith told us to go slowly here when we consider fast-track. That's kind of interesting. We're, we're being told to, we need to speed this project up, but at the same time, we're being told, look, the board even needs fast-track. It can exercise its discretion to approve on a specific case-by-case basis whether authorize fast-track. Well, here's our first, first, uh, first time that we can exercise discretion, and on what basis do we exercise it? You can't even tell me what this does.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna exercise your discretion on fast-tracking Liberty Quarry specifically, once we bring back ordinance-
We don't, we don't have any requests from any other mining interests for this process anyway? I mean, I feel that you're interested-
No, we don't. The only fast-track authorization we, request we have today is the one that Liberty Quarry has submitted.
Okay, now, I have mines in my district, some of which are undergoing revised permits, and, um, my folks read the newspapers, and they, nobody's called me, nobody said, look, Ed, it is a great idea, or, or we're in the past, fast-track could've really helped us out in this way, or can't you do some modified form of fast-track? And I have, I have literally hundreds of millions of dollars of mining interest in the Temskele Valley in my district right now. I have not heard from them. And maybe they'll call me up tonight or tomorrow, I don't know. But we're being told we can exercise discretion. What is the information the future board would have to be able to properly intelligently exercise its discretion as to which project, you know, where, get, get the, the gold ring and go forward with fast-track, and which ones, sorry guys, you're, you just don't qualify for fast-track in my estimation, but what is our basis for using our discretion in the future, particularly when we haven't done any studies when we're authorizing fast-track? We don't even have any analysis, confident analysis before us of the project. And here today, when we're being asked to even start the process, our own staff can't tell us what that process does in the key, in the most key aspect of speeding up the process, of speeding up the project.
Well, giving back eligibility and criteria that is set forth in, in your fast-track policy. There, there are specific eligibility criteria that is spelled out for, for-
It's, it's mainly economic though, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely.
There's some threshold, I suppose you have two projects that meet those, or three projects, that meet those thresholds. Is it still automatic that a board member or board majority would have to pay that, or do, does the board majority have some discretion, even though they meet these threshold, economic thresholds, so many jobs, so many millions of dollars, that for other reasons, we could say, well, this really needs a closer examination, we don't want you to skip, or we, we think you ought to have some fast-track, but you should have some additional study? Does the board, or board majority would still have that ability?
I believe the board would have that ability, yes.
All right. If, if I could just clarify, Bob, and you, and most everybody, other than perhaps Supervisor Menoit, when the economy was good, and we fast-tracked a number of projects that fell within the current ordinance that allows us to do that, it was to fast-track within a ninety-day period, correct? That was the time limit to allow us to fast-track?
We bring it back to the board within a ninety-day period unless the project's affiliate, has an affiliated EIR.
Right.
So, so will you fast-track this, this, start this fast-track process, get it developed, and it's approved, and then this revised proposal, when Granite gets on the fast-track, when could, when could this board be considering that project again?
Okay, so best-case scenario, if we're talking actual projects, we could bring back amendments to introduce, um, introduce and adopt on August twenty-eighth, and then adopt on September eleventh. The amendments to those ordinances will go into effect on October eleventh. As early as October sixteen, the board could approve or deny fast-track authorization for Liberty Quarry. And then, within that, after they receive that, we would have to bring a project back to the board within ninety days.
All right, so as early as Oc, the middle of October, the board could-
Board could have considered fast-track authorization for Liberty Quarry.
And then, then this project could come back to us within, within ninety days-
Within ninety days.
After the middle of October. So it could come back, what, thirty days later?
Potentially, potentially.
Thirty days later, and up to ninety days later.
Yes, we'll have to review the application.
All right, I, I just wanted to make sure people understood what, what, what was going on here in the way of timing, because this is essential too. Uh, and I think it is interesting that we're, I have not experienced in the past calls for fast-tracking with the other mining operations in my district. Um, you know, I, I, you know, as we see, they're fit, they're long-term projects. Here, this one's been coming fifty years, or seventy-five years, they've been on for a long, long time, and everybody's made a point about their complexity and importance and so forth. So, um, the, the, this, this applicant already in fact got a major consideration with timing and cost, for that matter. They already have a modified fast-track, and that is the approval of their, their original EIR. And that, that takes them back here a lot faster than would have otherwise been the case with this, with this new proposal. So, I am not, I don't see the, the reasoning behind, uh, or the need for giving this applicant, that's all we're talking about, right, there's no others, there are presenters at this point. Several extra months, what it turns out to be, maybe as many as six months for the fast-track. It's not that much. I don't think it makes or breaks our economy, particularly talking about fifty-year, fifty-year project. Uh, and, and when, when a project is so important supposedly, that we've got a, we've got a short circuit, the normal planning process, and been in place for a long, long time, and that allow people to have a say, and allow, and particularly with Planning, Planning Commission is a very valuable step in this process. Um, I want to see some overwhelming need for that, not just in one applicant, not, but, but some really, uh, major basis for making that leap. And, and I don't see that today. Maybe, maybe, one of the board members, other arguments will, will show me what that is, but I don't see it to, uh, there is a need to change our processes around here. And this, this applicant already pointed out, already has a significant advantage in being able to bring back their revised proposal already. Okay. Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Buster. Any other members?
Supervisor Stone.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a speaker that had mentioned that we have a number of elections going on right now, including my own. I'm very grateful that the citizens of the third district elected me in the primary. I, I made it clear, um, in my campaign statement that this is going to be my last term on the board of supervisors, so that gives me a lot of liberty to, um, to speak my mind a little bit more without, uh, fear of political retaliations. Today's a very unfortunate day in the county of Riverside. The still-conceived agenda item is nothing more than an end run to rewrite ordinance five fifty-five, the county's service mining ordinance. Not for fast-tracking mining operations in another district, but to stifle opportunities for our constituents in the first and third districts to attend and express their concerns via the public hearing process. On a specific project, a mere, mere image of a project already heard and denied by a majority of the board, namely the Liberty Quarry. Ordinance five fifty-five was written specifically for mining permits. Because of the controversy impacts and potential health hazards they may create without the appropriate mitigations, all the supervisors need to understand that this is going to open Pandora's box and will allow mines that are shut down, or mines that are, could be proposed in areas that are not totally appropriate to get a fast-track status county-wide. So we all have skin in this game. The ordinance was not developed to make the process easy, but comprehensive in order to protect the health and welfare and safety of the residents who collect it and possess. I think Supervisor Buster's made it very clear that we can go down this path of getting a fast-track process defined, including service mining permits, and then have a hearing to decide whether Granite construction should be considered, although I think that decision's already been made. This ordinance mentions the word planning commission twelve times. It mentions the word planning director thirty times, emphasizing the dominant role the planning commission and the planning director have in navigating a project to either approval or denial based on objective data, not political influence. The only mention of the board of supervisors in ordinance five 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 is to act as an appeal body if the decision by the planning commission is challenged by the opponents or proponents of a mining project. Again, Supervisor Buster made it very clear that going through this process is probably going to equate to allowing the planning commission to have their hand in evaluating this project. We aren't shaving any time off. And if the plan, planning commission feels that this new revised permit is one that they can support, I would welcome that debate here. If the board of supervisors are unsure, there will be an appeal. Stripping the planning commission of these responsibilities would be derelict in our responsibilities to our constituents that depend on us to make the right decisions on behalf of them. Continuing the practice of allowing our planning commission to review and decide these application, applications is in the best interest of our citizens. I'm sure that my colleague from the fourth district will claim that this is about jobs. Is the risk of approving a flawed project with the multitude of dangerous sequelae it could cause be worth a questionable sixty-five jobs the project may create? I don't think so. The planning commission is now finally hearing my wine country expansion project, which has been in the works now for a few years. This project promises to create over two thousand jobs at Buildout. Yet I chose purposely not to fast-track it, although it certainly would have qualified for it, I think you would agree. But why didn't I fast-track it? Because there would be many unforeseen consequences that must take, that we must take a serious look at. Formulate mitigation measures to protect my many constituents that call the wine country their home, and not turn a blind eye to the county's economic development plans on their quality of life. Please don't be swayed by the financial sharing facets of this new plan. That will come at a greater expense to my constituents' quality of life, codified by hundreds of physicians inside and outside the Temecula Valley. My friend and colleague Supervisor Tabaloni, you appropriately voted to deny the Liberty Quarry project, but you supported the approval of their EIR, hoping that all parties involved would attempt to work together on a potential compromise. However, my friend, I'm told by SOS, Cal State San Diego, Pechanga, and the city of Temecula, that there has been no outreach before submitting their plans as you hoped, but instead have slightly modified their project. But it's like lipstick on a pig. It's still a pig. Now, as a result, we are here today creating a mechanism to abbreviate this disastrous project, an attempt to ramrod this project down our throats without a blink of an eye. Supervisors, my constituents are tired. I'm tired. We've spent thousands of hours advocating, that is our, the opponents of the project, about the grave concerns this project will have. My constituents have suffered through much anxiety, and many that are not retired have lost significant wages, coming to the numerous public hearings, and here we are again, on the doorsteps of this hall that they own, and as the closest pillar of democracy where voices can in fact be heard. Taking this right away would not only be inconscionable, but unconstitutionally taking the First Amendment rights away from them. Finally, I've not witnessed an issue that has so divided this board as much as this project has. Again, Supervisor Tabaloni, you were the swing vote to approve the EIR of this project, which has resulted in this hearing and many more contentious ones to come. The least, the least we can do is play by the rules. Let the project be traditionally reviewed by our planning staff, planning commission, and by us, the board of supervisors, when, not if, the project is appealed. To approve this fast-track would give the appearance of a back-room deal in the making. Let's continue our transparency and not alter county-wide ordinances for the sake of one applicant, and keep those questioning our motives and ethics off the front page of newspapers dominated by another county. Ms. Coyle raises legal precedence as to why we cannot fast-track mines. As a county, what has been our recent track record in defending CEQA lawsuits? Not very good. We just paid one of the speakers today, Mr. Johnson, eighty-five thousand dollars in legal fees over a CEQA issue. Lewis Operating Systems, New Abel Project, um, their EIR was shot down. Millions would be paid by the developer that's identified as county because that EIR has been shot down. We've got to stop fighting the system, and let's do the right thing. Liberty Quarry's prior approved EIR has been legally challenged. We will soon bring a new ordinance, making the county the lead in choosing EIR consultants in the future, not the applicants. The board choose to support this agenda item I'm going to bring forward. We cannot have the fox guarding the hen house without applicants dictating the outcomes. We have a time-honored tradition here that we respect district lines. I am the one that takes responsibility for the outcomes of my portion of the district, as you do in your respective districts. Please, fellow board members, let me deal with issues in my district, as I respect your oversight in your district. I also want to mention that I believe that the EIR is flawed in it, the data in it is over three years old. If we're going to review this project, we should demand a new EIR, with more recent data, so the planning commission, so this board can make an intelligent decision about this project. I regret the many contentious comments we've had to endure here today, but however, this is the chaos that will be created county-wide with abandoning our time-honored tradition of respecting district lines. Who knows better our districts than the supervisor in his or her respective district? This fast-track is opposed by most local government entities within the third district. The city of Temecula, the city of Marietta, the city of Canyon Lake, the city of Menifee, the Pechanga Tribe, Cal State San Margos, the Realtors, and Chamber of Commerce. There's significant opposition to this. Property rights were mentioned by Ms. Gilard. The right to have a planning permit is a discretionary permit, not an entitlement. Heaven help us, if people can develop their property any way they wish in Riverside County. Ms. Harrison says, we need the jobs, the quarry we're creating. She fails to mention that she'll be a direct beneficiary of the mine being approved, and that the teachers' union fundsters will be required by law to be paid by Granite based on the tonnage extracted from this mine. Finally, my fellow colleagues, my fellow constituents, I'm a resident of Riverside County now for thirty years. I live downwind from the proposed quarry. I enjoy the beautiful afternoon breezes every afternoon, cleaning our air daily. Please do the right thing and stop this fast-track that will open mining opportunities county-wide, jeopardizing the health, safety, and welfare of all of our citizens. That will be handicapped in their ability to have due process to fight such projects in the future. Please don't support this fast-track.
Thank you, Supervisor Stone. All right, I have your further speakers, Supervisor Menoit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, yeah, I have to say, it's been a day filled with emotion, obviously, emotion on both sides, very emotional comments, that's understandable, particularly from the folks who live near this proposed project. It's been emotional for me to hear some of the things were said about me. Frankly, I've been surprised by the hurtful, largely unsubstantiated personal attacks, questioning my moral character, repeatedly impugning my reputation, calling conditions of generous and corrupt, so many times I can't even count. And it's been repeated over and over again that Granite was my largest contributor. That, that statement is factually incorrect. Since two thousand and nine, Granite has made approximately eight relatively modest contributions, totaling sixty-one hundred dollars, which sounds like a lot of money to a lot of people, but it's a very small amount of the total support that I've had from a lot of people who believe I'm doing the job for the right reasons, and I do. And it's very hurtful to hear people say otherwise. I've had many, many supporters along the way, a number of them in the solar industry. Their support then prevented me from raising concern with proposals from that industry to blanket eastern Riverside County with hundreds of square miles of solar projects, and very little or no benefit coming to the county or the local government, caused me to bring forward a very controversial proposal because it was the right thing to do. It does not matter. And here that I repeat it so often was, uh, well, there's a lot of emotion, and I understand people using emotion instead of facts. But I'd like to set the record straight about why I supported the original application, and I clearly stated those conclusions in the last full day of the hearings before this board, and I'd like to review them now. First, Granite has been a good neighbor. Granite's been a good, major employer of Riverside County for many decades. I have had and do have many personal friends who have worked for Granite in all capacities, from the line to the management. These go back to the soccer fields with my young kids, church and school, relationships that long predate my involvement in politics. Granite is a great employer in the minds of many, who have survived and raised their families working for Granite. Secondly, I know many, many people who have lived very close to many quarries. Some own by Granite, not all of them. There are seventeen quarries in the fourth supervisory district. I have never observed, or have I ever heard anyone else complain of dust or material emanating from these quarries. Some of these are twenty and thirty years old. One owned by Granite is less than a mile from a large number of homes nearby, and they don't incorporate the most modern technologies the proponents have been requiring- they don't incorporate the most modern technologies the proponents have been requiring included in this proposal, which would have far more safeguards and testing and required monitoring than anything currently operating. And that's why I question the emotional pleas about harm to be done to our kids, and believe me, that is a major concern to me. Of course, I'm concerned about health effects on kids. I'm concerned about the health effects on all of our kids throughout the region. One of the things that caused me to take a real hard look at this proposal was the fact that it would remove one thousand two hundred and seventeen trucks daily from Interstate Fifteen. It would eliminate over sixteen million miles driven by gravel hauling trucks from our freeways annually. As a former highway patrolman, as someone who drives our freeways and doesn't particularly like being behind a gravel truck, removing sixteen million miles of truck travel from our highways and reducing pollution and congestion to that extent has some value, I think, and should be considered. And all the trucks using this quarry, admittedly driving far fewer miles on our Empire highways than if we allow the status quo to continue, but the remaining trucks that would be using this quarry would all be much cleaner than the average truck in the fleet today because the proponents were required to require that. And once a major quarry moves in the direction of requiring that trucks using that quarry have to meet the latest standards, it will cause the entire industry to take note and many to change those latest standards ahead of when they might otherwise. All of these changes would dramatically improve air quality, not just in the Temecula area, but throughout the region. It's estimated these changes would reduce air emissions by over two hundred and sixteen tons annually. Jobs are an important component. I believe some significant jobs would be created. There are dozens of people working at each of the quarries in our district today. And the cost of road base, ladies and gentlemen, this drives the cost of every construction project higher when you have to import road base to an area. As chairman of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, it concerns me that we don't do as good a job as we could to ensure that we use every taxpayer dollar as effectively as possible. Having a quarry in southwest Riverside County would save taxpayers countywide, not just in one district, but countywide, millions of dollars that could be productively applied to many other projects that won't be built because we're spending this money unnecessarily. I'd like to address a theme that's been repeated over and over again, that somehow fast-tracking would limit public input, and that this project would somehow be slid under the carpet or ninety days, and the impression that, oh, this is going to be such a horrible undercutting of public process. My friends, this project has had more public input and more public comment than any other project that has ever come before this Board of Supervisors in history. If I'm wrong, I'll ask someone, please point out the difference, but I think that this is absolutely the case, and if this fast track was approved, despite the fast track, it would require that we go through the hearings we had in front of this board all over again. So a process that's already the longest in history would be half again as long, and all of that is about public comment and input. So to say that this project, or this proposal somehow limits public input, doesn't allow for the vetting of this process is wrong. I don't look forward to the day, and I don't like the idea of sitting through four more days of hearings or five more days of hearings on this project, but for the reasons I articulated, not because of any relationship I have with the proponents, but because I believe it's the best interest of Riverside County residents in general. I believe that it would make sense for us to allow this exception. Not fast-track every project. This one is different. It has had a complete environmental impact report, it has had complete vetting beyond anything we've ever seen. I believe this proponent should have the opportunity to come back in front of public hearings again for a fair hearing on the revised proposal. To make that possible, I believe that this board should authorize staff to begin the process of developing for our consideration necessary amendments to allow fast-tracking and certain supply before this board.
Okay, for those of us that were around during Eagle Mountain and Elsabronny landfill, I think this one tops the chart, but Supervisor Stone, your next.
Yeah, thanks again, Mr. Chair. I didn't know that we were going to get into an in-depth discussion about the Liberty Quarry project, since Supervisor Benoit wants to bring up his reasons for supporting it. I'm going to share my reasons for denying it. And one of them is that seventy percent of that aggregate's going to San Diego, it's not going to Riverside County, and there's not the main proof that there's an aggregate shortage in Riverside County, and that jobs figure is a bunch of BS. It's just a redistribution of the jobs. It's just a redistribution of the sales tax. So, you know, the planning commission gets into the minutia of a project, while Supervisor Benoit says, we haven't had a project that's had more review than this. He's absolutely right. The problem is if that project was denied, it doesn't exist anymore. So now we have a de novo project, a de novo, which means they start from scratch, where our planning department will do the appropriate analysis. We should let the planning commission do the appropriate in-depth review of the technical studies, something the Board of Supervisors relies on the planning commission to do. Why would we abbreviate that? Why would we eliminate the planning commission in six hearings to find the technical data on this new project? Maybe there is some great new data that would enlighten this whole board, that may even convince a majority of this board to say, hey, you know what? We reviewed it in depth, and you know what? We think it might be in the best interest of the county of Riverside to approve it. But you know what? I don't see why we should shortcut the process when we're really not short cutting the process. I believe if you have the planning commission reviews, we're probably going to get to the Board of Supervisors probably about the same time. And there's nothing wrong with having five sets of eyes, with each one of us having an appointed planning commission to review. And also, let's not rush into a decision. Let's let county council hire outside counsel with mining law to make sure that we're going down the right path and that we're not going to get sued and waste more taxpayer money. Let's not take shortcuts, because it ends up costing the taxpayers twice as much. This is a new project. It needs to be reevaluated. It should go before the planning commission. We should reserve fast tracks for projects that are going to create hundreds and thousands of jobs, where it's as simple as fast-tracking their application to get their tenant improvements done, to get their land entitlements done, so we can get those jobs and reduce our unemployment in Riverside County. I promise you, my friends, this project will not reduce unemployment numbers in Riverside County by one one-thousandth of one percent. This is all smoke and mirrors. So again, I urge the board to do the right thing, and the right thing is to not fast-track this project. I respect Granite's right to have due process in submitting another plan. They're entitled to do that because of the approval of their EIR, but let's review it prudently, responsibly, so there's no periods of even a perceived impropriety, because if this board approves this fast track, there are many that are going to think that there's a backroom deal that's been done. We should avoid all even potential inferences of impropriety on this board. I pride myself in being a member of Riverside County Board of Supervisors for the past eight years, and I want to pride myself in being on here with my respected colleagues for the next four. But I don't want to take over the headlines that another county has that. We need to keep the process clean. We need the process honest, and we need to give an honest evaluation of this project through the traditional means of planning commission. It will get to the Board of Supervisors just as fast, and we will not open Pandora's box countywide. Who knows what applications exist in Supervisor Tabaloni's district? Who knows what opportunities exist in Supervisor Ashley's district? Somebody mentioned the Rock Quarry in Owanka. It was abandoned. The hole's there. We should let shamrock mines happen. This is going to be the largest hole, man-made hole, a mining operation in the country. We need to review that reclamation plan and make sure that is appropriate with the state mining codes, and making sure that we get a buy-off on our plan by the state before we rush into anything. There's no urgency in approving this, except if you want to cater to one special interest in this county that has a project in the pipeline, that wants to get it approved as quickly as they possibly can, because they understand political timetables are at risk here for their project. We cannot sacrifice the health and welfare of this county by abbreviating this process. It's irresponsible.
Supervisor Stone, could you expand on political timetables, your comment?
Yes. Supervisor Tabaloni, I support you for U.S. Congress, and I believe that there are those that believe that you're going to get elected, and I hope that you do get elected, because I think you'll be a great congressman in Washington, D.C. But there are those that believe that you may be a swing vote to approve a quarry project, but your successor, should you be elected in Congress, which I hope you are, will probably be a left-leaning person, because the governor will be making that appointment. And I don't believe that the proponents of this project believe that their best interests will be served by having their governor's appointee make a decision on this project.
Okay, thank you. I'll respond to that after my colleague speaks. Supervisor Mr. Just if memory serves, at this late hour of the day of media, both Elsabronny, I remember we interrupted our whole hearing process for a long time because they had a separate FBI investigation going on, and then this came back to us again, more hearings, so much time has passed. Eagle Mountain, didn't we have two rounds of that after there was initial legal problem ahead? And finally, here today, the world, the trash world, the landfill, where the world shifted, and there probably will never be an Eagle Mountain, Eagle Mountain project. So these long-term projects where there are a lot of promises and a lot of hoopla about the effect on the economy have to be scrutinized very closely. Once they're in, you really, really committed yourself, and the public agencies, as well as any private investment is heavily sunk, literally, into the ground. So normally, if you look at our agenda today, the sixteen, the fifteens, the sixteen items are land use items. We don't have as many of them as we're used to because the economy's still going down, but usually we get through them rather quickly because our planning commission helps point us to the remaining issues, or the applicant has a problem, some specific three or four issues that they disagree with the planning commission's decision, so they appeal it to us. So overall, it helps to really hone the process, point the process, and I think overall to expedite process for most, if not all applicants. So I don't see the current process that we have for mines, given their complexity, given their importance, their long-term nature. I don't see this specific reapplication being harmed by going through the ordinary process. In fact, this board knows how to expedite hearings, so does the planning commission. And I think all that should be in our, you know, there should be a very weighty showing to fundamentally alter for all categories, all categories of mines this time, to change that process, to short-circuit the process, to change it around. And again, I don't think that bar has been met here with this application.
Let me just say, as it relates to Supervisor Stone's comments, first and foremost, the board, when they select their chairman every year, give that chairman the opportunity to set the agenda, and it's at the board's, it's at the chairman's discretion. Obviously, we do it with input from, or the chairman does it with input from his colleagues. Whatever way goes here today, and, you know, I'll tell you about my thoughts in a moment. I'll be damned if I'm going to let this become an election issue. Will I allow this to be coming before the board, either on Election Day or before Election Day, if it goes forward? It's, there are some that are trying to make it that. There were some that were trying to make it that even before the board took action to deny the quarry in whatever it was named. I won't tell you what threats were received, but there were threats. There have been some of you, including an individual who I have a lot of faith and trusted, a colleague of mine, Marion Edmonds, who I think was out of order today by her comments to colleagues that she works with, inappropriate. We agree to disagree on issues, and many, many public opinion, or public decisions that we make, but you've been there, and I think it was very unfortunate. There was an article in the press enterprise that said that, of course, the press enterprise doesn't always do their research like they should. It says that I received, we've all received contributions from both sides of the issue here, people. We have. Trust me, just for those of you that have the time and said that you've looked, look. I received actually more contributions from the opposition. The press enterprise was not correct. Having said that, I don't care who I receive contributions from. If you think that any one of us up here are going to make decisions based on what we've received, life's too short. Life's too short. We're not like our county to the north in some of the issues that are going on there. And I find it appalling and embarrassing that some of you would think that. It's very unfortunate. There is no interest on my part to rush this part, to rush this process through, but I will tell you that if we could fast-track every project in today's economy, then I would support that. We are at thirteen point something percent countywide and in need of jobs, and as, I think it's embarrassing that this project took too long, seven years. EIR only takes about eighteen months max. That's what we've, that's what we've seen over the years, eighteen months. And I'm a proponent of fast-tracking. I have been from day one since I was elected to this board in November of nineteen ninety-four, and we put this item back on the agenda in, I think it was March of nineteen ninety-five And if you think, I think Supervisor Benoit said, if you think we want to sit through more days of this, you're crazy. I know you don't. We don't either, but that's our, that's our responsibility as elected officials, and we're responsible to be fair as much as we can. That's why, you heard me this morning, and this is true, I came out of, I came into this bedroom this morning believing in my own mind that I just couldn't justify supporting the manager raises for the sheriff, for those of you that are here, and I know many of you were for the sheriff and the DA, just didn't think it was the right time. But after hearing the arguments and the issues and understanding the difference between the at-will employees who basically can be fired on the spot anytime, and the need that these individuals are relatively young and aren't going to be replaced with senior people if they leave, I made the decision in my own mind and heart that it was the right thing to do to give those two constitutional officers the ability to provide increases to those two groups. It's no different, and some of you were here. When I was a member of LAFCO, this goes back many years, I haven't sat on LAFCO for two years, and I think it's been, well, this process has been going for seven years. The city of Temecula came before LAFCO and wanted to annex the property, excuse me, annex that area into the city. I made it very clear then, let's go back, please try to go back and work this out. Didn't happen. I subsequently left LAFCO, and I will be, when this, I sat through four days of hearings in Maine, as everybody did. as everybody did, my colleagues. And yes, I knew going into this thing, at least I felt pretty confident going into this thing back in May, that I was going to be the swing vote. But I didn't know where I was going, just like this morning when I came in to talk about the management raises. But I made the decision in May that I could have gone either way, just telling you. Everybody else has talked, I'm not talking. I could have gone either way. I made that comment at the hearings when we got to the final decision. I didn't have a problem with the environmental issues, I really didn't. As I mentioned, I had issues. I have quarries in my district along with 15-308, most of them are Supervisor Busters, but I have some in my district that never caused a problem, ever. In the end, because I could have gone any way, I could have gone for or against the quarry, I decided to side with my colleague and colleagues, Supervisor Bester and Stone, whose area the closest part was. Then it came back two months later for the findings, and the appeal asked us, initial appeal asked us to certify the EIR. Again, I never had any problems in May with the EIR. Go back and listen to the tapes. And so, knowing, after 18 years on this board, how long, how expensive, how difficult it is to get an EIR through, I felt at least, since I never had a problem with EIR, at least give the applicant the ability, if they want to reapply someday, to bring him back without having to go through all the expense and time. And what I heard was just a circus of hearings through the planning commission. And boy, did the fairness change for the Temecula area. Oh, God, the praise I got between May and July from the Temecula folks, amazing, thank you so much. Boy, did that turn very quickly. How unfortunate. And boy, did some people even say, I don't want to support you financially anymore, Cavallone. I don't care. That's not why I do this. Fast-track any project that we can, is my opinion. And I'd like to hear Supervisor Benoit's motion, but what I will agree to do is, if Supervisor Benoit is willing to do it, is adopt an order to consider initiating any project for the fast-track process, bring that back with study and within the time period that's been requested on ordinance 480 and also 555. Because I believe the most important thing to this region today, anyone want to correct me? It's jobs, the economy. The most important thing is jobs and the economy, because our economy is in the tank, and it's not coming back anytime soon, ladies and gentlemen. So we better be opening our eyes and doing everything we can to turn this economy around. So that, I've said enough. You can tell this is emotional for everybody, but no one deserves, no one, I don't care what your opinion is, deserves threats, deserves someone coming to you and saying they're going to do everything they can to defeat you. No one deserves the accusations that you're only doing this for the money, because if you think that we can do that, if you think that's what we're doing this for, you're all a bunch of uneducated folks. Whoever wants to talk to me.
If there's no one else ready to take a motion, I'll take it.
Supervisor Stone.
Yeah. Thank you, Supervisor, and I agree with you, the personal attacks on any member of the board are something that we all are very sensitive to, and we have to agree to disagree on this board. But I cannot support an open-ended, let's fast-track anything that comes before this board. I'm not going to support a dump, I'm not going to support an airport, I'm not going to support a nuclear power plant, I'm not going to just support anything at a fast-track until I understand what the financial and job benefits are to this county. The whole purpose of fast-tracking is to deliver jobs. And when I look at jobs, I'm looking at creating 100, 200, 300, 400, 1,000 jobs, then I think it's worth streamlining the process, abbreviating the process, as long as it doesn't jeopardize the health and safety of residents by abbreviating the review. So I would like to support your motion, or if that's a motion Supervisor Benoit is going to make on Star, I can support it, only because I know there are some uses in this county that it would be inappropriate to fast-track. Although I want to make very clear for the record, I want jobs in this county, and I believe the wine country plan is going to deliver thousands of jobs. And I believe there are other businesses that are hopefully looking to relocate back to California that we can court, that are going to be high-paying jobs in the biomedical field in southwest Riverside County. Agriculture is doing very well in southwest Riverside County. Anywhere we can help streamline through red tape, getting businesses open and getting people back to work, I strongly support. But I just can't support an open-ended, let's fast-track anything that comes before us.
Ms. Chairman?
I was a daydream, and now I see all these lights about the United States. Supervisor Ashley.
Now, I understand your zeal, you know, to help the jobs, we all feel that, all five of us. I think Supervisor Benoit makes a motion to fast-track, it ought to be to ask the staff to look in to see whether it's possible that we can enhance the fast-track process, not just make it open-ended.
Supervisor.
Do you see what other projects that you can make it, reach it out further than the way it is now, you know, to make it fast-track more accessible, to project more projects, but don't make it open-ended?
But I think one thing that needs to be clear, we can't, there's no project, correct me if I'm wrong. There's still projects that are subject to seek whether they're going to have to be dealt with, the EIRs. This just happens to be one that came back, and there are others that could move forward as well under a fast-track if we wanted to bypass the planning commission, correct? Madam Counsel?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to talk? Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Bester, followed by Supervisor Ashley, followed by Supervisor Stone.
The county has had a fast-track, and during the boom years, of course, we all knew we were the fastest-growing county in the Phoenix area, where Iowa is, but certainly one of the fastest growing in the nation, and not just residential, but all forms of development were being processed through the county. And, you know, so when I got very few complaints from any investors about stumbling blocks in the county, when we heard about any, they were usually individual in nature, not systemic. I mean, the proof was in the pudding. The county was growing very rapidly, people were getting through our process, and things were working. So here in the recession, it's easy to make a claim that the things standing between us and prosperity is governmental process here, and if we just fast-track it, that's going to be the solution to our problems. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a red herring. I think you're diverting this off here from the issue here, because it's not the problem, and it's not going to release any more projects, and it poses even more of a problem to our economy with the area of mining and its long-term impacts on other properties, on other economic potential. So there has to be a real judicious weighing here, that's what Temecula was saying, look, he said, we got a wine country, we got jobs in that, we don't want to ruin the perception of the beauty of our area. That's an economic value, too. So that's what a careful weighing of alternatives, and which takes place through hearings and a lot of the other issues, at least you have a two-step process here in the county. That's important, because you don't always think of things, the applicant, and the months, and a lot of decision-makers. We don't always think of all the potential issues and the answers to them just through one stage. That's the reason why we have this possibility of appeal, and then on certain cases, there's automatic hearings by this board. And that two-step process, may I submit, has served us very well over many, many years, as not just in place in the county, it's in cities as well. And so here today, what you have is you have a call to eliminate that process of the various types of projects where it's probably the most needed, just a blanket financial elimination, subject to future discretion on the part of future board majorities or board members of the district. And again, I'll go back, I don't think there's been a showing, either economically, process-wise, time-wise, that there is a need to make that change here today. And so this county has been well-served by its processes, and we don't have a major systemic flaw, I see, and we should not be blaming our economic ills here on, in this case, on not fast-tracking everything in sight here in this county. It's not going to change or undermine economic problems.
I think the burden of our state government and the regulations that we have to put up here with California as opposed to a state like Texas dramatically does impact our jobs. And we should be doing everything we can to streamline it rather than just become comfortable with it.
Go to Texas.
Apologies. Supervisor Benoit, followed by Supervisor Stone. Yeah. Supervisor Benoit, followed by Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate all of my colleagues' comments. I would ask a question of County Counsel. As I understand it, the recommended motion by staff, I have the ability to make some minor changes in the recommended direction.
Yes, you do.
In light of the comments that were made, I would note also that, you know, anything that, our fast-track policy as it is today is somewhat advantageous. Anything that involves CUP already is eligible by virtue of that for the fast-track, while other things like this application, which has been fully vetted and has a complete EIR already done, is not. My purpose was to allow us the flexibility in a case like this one and others that we deem appropriate in the future, to use the fast-track process, and I would like to make the motion to modify the staff recommendation to explore and bring back to this board a recommendation more generally to allow for more discretion in the board to utilize a fast-track process when we deem appropriate.
I see you're courting points.
And I'd be glad to.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Supervisor Stone, my fault.
No, it's okay. You know, I believe that the five of us are business savvy guys, and if you've got a bona fide economic interest coming into this county, it's going to generate property taxes and sales taxes and jobs, the five of us are going to band together, and we're going to fast-track. The process already exists, it's worked well historically in this county. Let's just call this what it is. Let's not muddy the waters, okay? This is a fast-track for Granite project. Let's at least just admit that's what it is, and let's vote for it. But let's not make it open-ended and muddy the waters, have smoke-filled rooms here. We understand the dynamics that are going on here today, and it's okay. We can agree to disagree. But let's not leave it open-ended. Let's go with the original motion that Supervisor Benoit offered. The intent is to fast-track Granite. It appears they have votes to do that, I'm sure. We'll see everybody in a very spirited way coming back and having the opportunity to voice their opinions. But let's not muddy the waters. So let's just go with the original motion, and if there's any thing that we're missing in the fast-track process that needs to be reevaluated, either individual supervisors or staff, bring it back to us. Hey, we're missing the boat. We have a manufacturing company that doesn't qualify for a fast-track because of this, that's going to create 1,000 jobs. We did this in the city of Temecula when I was there, we had a matrix. And that matrix was, we looked at property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, and jobs. And that would dictate whether or not we as a city would pay incentives to bring that business to Temecula. Rancho Stampin Graphics, I believe was the name of one of the companies we recruited, I think from Corona. We recruited a lot of businesses that brought jobs and revenue to our city, and we tied it to this formula. We should be doing the same thing in the county of Riverside. If we're missing the vote on things that should be fast-tracked, that aren't subject to seek, well, that we can fast-track, cut red tape, we should do it. But let's just vote for what we've mentioned all day. What's the real reason why we're here? We're here because there is a majority of the board that wants to support a fast-track for Granite. I see the votes. Let's be transparent, let's be honest. This has nothing to do with any other businesses, because we've never had any contentiousness over any other businesses having to be fast-tracked in the county. So let's vote on what the real issue is. Let's vote to fast-track Granite mine, let's be honest with the constituents, and let's vote on it.
Supervisor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that this is a project worthy of a second look, particularly as recently submitted. If it was allowable under our current ordinances to do that without amending the ordinances, I would have simply brought that motion back. It is not. We have to amend the ordinances according to County Counsel. And I believe that there may be other opportunities, too, but clearly, Granite is on our minds as we have this opportunity. So I reiterate my motion, and I only add that I would ask that we try to bring this back by August 28th, I believe is the next.
That's your next program.
Mr. Chairman, last thing, and it'll probably be my last comment. I am going to be out of state, as you know, my wife has got some significant disabilities. We are seeing a specialist in Dallas, Texas, and I would appreciate.
You cannot speak. I have respect. You call all the West Puffs. Okay. I know, if I don't cooperate with you to get me out, I just ask you that you're here to keep talking.
Supervisor Stone. I apologize for that first. I would just like to be here at a time when this comes back, if I could, but I do have to take my wife to a clinic in Dallas, Texas, and it's going to be a while before I'm back. So if it's possible to move this when I come back to here, it'd be appreciated if you can accommodate it, you can accommodate it, but.
Supervisor Stone, if you think that we would bring this back without you here, we would not. We have to go through it, you're going through it.
Okay. I won't be here August 21st, if you're picking on that day.
Some of us, I mean, I don't know why you're all here, but I just want to reiterate that we have a very limited schedule between now and the end of the year. We have a very limited schedule between now and the end of the year, due to Christmas, Thanksgiving, Labor Day.
So the next feasible board date was the 25th for introduction and August 7th for adoption.
Before we can get there, I'd like to Supervisor Benoit to repeat the motion, please.
I would move staff's recommendation, with the exception that I would ask that they broaden the approach to include flexibility for other projects and not limited to only surface mining at the discretion of the board when appropriate. And we bring it back as soon as feasible with deference to CEP, Supervisor Stone.
Supervisor, but I'd just be clear, this is not specific then to surface mining permits, this is a request to, the feasibility of fast-tracking, any projects at the discretion of the board.
And I believe there's at least one ordinance that's specific to surface mining, would have to be amended in order to allow this to move forward. So that one would be surface mining, the other one more general.
Are there any other ordinances that we're not thinking of, Madam Counsel, outside of 555 and 4?
There are need to amend ordinance 752, Madam Counsel. There is a need to amend ordinance seven fifty-two, County Council.
Well, that's our, I believe, our par ordinance, and we'll take a look at that.
That's what I would ask that you include, that we take all of the areas that does a little bit of interest, do we have this on behalf of the county?
I would suggest that we do look at all of the necessary ordinances that would allow us to consider Granite or other projects that at our discretion, we believe, deserve to be fast-tracked.
Okay, very good. The motion ends. Any further comments? Please have. The expected motion is three-two, it's coming back then again, August. Hey, we have additional items here.